Okay, so as I said, I had come in over concerns about drainage on my property. I'm getting a lot of water backing up, getting really close to the house. I took some pictures and you all saw the pictures of this spring when we had an inch and a half of water in just a little over an hour and a half, and it backed up to within six inches of my bulkhead. The eighteen-inch drain, or the eighteen-inch pipe that's in there, on that day became overwhelmed. The water was at the top of it. I had water all along the north side of my property, all the way to 138, approximately two hundred, two hundred feet. Before the road was put in for the subdivision, almost all two hundred and fifty feet of the north of my property was drainage. It was sloped to go to the drainage pond over by the bank. And when they put the road in, it went up about four feet, and the only drainage that they put in for my property was an eighteen-inch pipe. It's getting progressively worse because they put a house into the west. It used to drain a lot to their southwest corner in what is now their backyard. To make it so that there's no standing water in that backyard, they had to bring it up. Wetlands that elevate are to the west, so the only place they could bring it was to the east, which now flows onto my property, and then towards that eighteen-inch pipe. They also took the drainage from their roof and ran all of the drain pipes to the eighteen-inch pipe. So I'm getting all the water off of their roof also. It wasn't quite as bad. I couldn't get any pictures because it was dark, but the last time we had a heavy rain at night, it looked like I had similar water. It didn't get quite as close to the house, even though they have fixed the three spots on 138 as far as back in the curving. So I don't think that's going to totally solve the problem. I don't have anything new here. I do have the Google Maps of what the north side of my property looked like before the road in, what it looks like after the road was put in. I have the pictures of the rain. The only thing I did find is I did find the plans for it to, before it was built, and from what I can tell, there was some question of whether it was built, the foundation was high enough. It looks to me, and you can take a look at it, but it looks to me like it was meant to go in at a hundred. I don't know. I just say, look at the, it says top of foundation, one hundred.
That's your foundation?
Yeah. And then when it went in, right before they put my garage in, they redid it, and they said it actually was built at 102.2.
So it was up higher?
So it was up higher than what the original plans were.
So the question is, what is the responsibility of the planning board is one question, and regardless of what the responsibility is, what can we do to help resolve the problem? So I don't really know either answer. Peter, have you had a chance to look at this at all?
We've looked at it, and I think initially there was a question about whether the house that was built within the subdivision had been done, you know, to impact the bottom, but it appears that they've done all the site grading and everything to make sure that all their water gets over to that eighteen-inch culvert. I'm not sure that, I mean, the design calculations already indicate that the culvert should have the capacity to handle the flows from that area. Now, his house is built, you know, down from the road and everything, and that does cause a lot of the water coming onto his property is from, you know, from 138. I think, you know, they, and, so, I'm not quite sure why, you know, he said that he had to build up a water to the top of eighteen-inch culvert, all the way back to 138. That seems, you know, like an extreme event.
As I said, it was an inch and a half and an hour and a half. I have the pictures that show the water at the top of the pipe. And as I said, because it was at the top of the pipe, my house sits, I think, seventy-three feet away from my north property line. It had backed up almost to my deck. My bulkhead is the thing closest to that side, and as I said, it was about six inches away from the bulkhead. My bulkhead's only up off the ground about three inches.
Are you saying that it was about three feet of water or so at where that eighteen-inch pipe is? That pipe was not able to handle that water?
It's getting there too fast from what I can tell.
And was the road, the, the water from 138, was it going in to the?
Some of it was. I mean, some of it definitely was, but as I said, this last rain, and I, the thing is, I'm more concerned about what happens if we get the remnants of a hurricane sitting over us for a day or two, you know, and we get four inches of rain, or, you know, that type of situation. I've kept it out of my basement so far, but this was a really dry summer.
Yeah, I was there, I looked at it, and I honestly don't see anything that we can actually do. I think it's out of our jurisdiction here. I, I mean, the developer has done just about everything that he can to, you know, to correct that problem, and I don't see anything that we can do. I think it's out of our jurisdiction here, in my view. But, Peter, you?
Have you been in contact with the developer of your property?
Uh-huh, and he, what his comment was, was he wasn't aware that the road was going to be elevated until the house was almost done. And so, he said if he would have known that when he built, he would have put it up higher and put it even with the road, but he said he didn't have that opportunity.
I'm kind of hoping to think the road is in the process of being planned, right?
Yeah.
I think what the board is trying to say is they just don't feel that your, your water issue is the, is coming from one of the subdivision next door.
You know, the only thing I can say is, the logic tells me that at one time I had two hundred and fifty feet of drainage to the north, and now I have eighteen-inch pipe.
Well, that's correct, but your builder should have did his research and knew that their, well, he must have known because he is, he is, he's friends with John. He knew John was going to put a subdivision in there. He should have got the, you know, the, where the road was going, and he should have designed your property and graded your property properly for your drainage to be able to drain properly off. Now, you're catching water? You might be, but it was because your property sits so low. Your property should have probably been graded a little higher and probably comes a little bit towards 138. Right now, it slopes down where you say, originally was your drainage, but we know that that subdivision is already in the planning space, so your contractor probably should have designed it so that the water would roll off onto the highway. You have a catch basin in front of your house, and, you know, I'm not sure.
So, I mean, I just want to be straight. Is the planning commission telling me the person who's liable is my building and the engineer that engineered the property?
It seems like it's a legal issue. I mean, if the, if the, if the subdivision was built according to the approved plans, then the question is, what is their responsibility versus what is your responsibility, or what's the responsibility of the builder of your house? For instance, I mean, this may be, who is legally responsible for the water that's on your property? Now, you would, I would say if I were you, that the water on my property isn't my responsibility, but the guy next door, their water's coming onto my property, and where does, where does it all fit in legally? So I don't know that this planning board has the authority to compel the subdivision owner to do something different. I don't know that. I'd have to consult with the town council. And at the same time, if I were you in your shoes, I would probably talk to a land use attorney and see what the options are, because I don't know honestly what the planning board can do for you.
Does all the water from the neighbor's property go onto your property?
Not all of it, no. I would say the majority of it, because their backyard is now draining onto my property, and as I said, all their roof line. But they have some slope in their front yard towards the road, and they have a little bit of slope on the west side.
Were they graded? Did they grade it that way so it would go to your property?
Yeah, they, he, the person who did it, who did a lot of the work, Nelson Pacheco, he was very nice. He was very upfront to begin with. He said, "There's nowhere for this water to go but to your property."
This is the water from their roof?
No, from their backyard, when they did the grading. He said, "There's no way to send it any other way." And I think the, whoever the engineer who was here last time had mentioned that there's a ridge going to the wetland to the south, and that's why there is no way for the water to go any other direction.
The water coming from the roof is directed to your property also?
Mm-hmm. They ran all of the, what looks like the rim.
Does it run through your property? Does, right?
Um, I don't think so. It'd be very close, but I don't think so. They ran it so that...
So they get that black pipe going exposed?
No, underground.
Underground.
See, what I was trying to determine is that you can't run water to somebody else's property. So I'm trying to determine if it's going onto your property and just creating a larger body of water somewhere else off your property.
If it's tied into the drain, the eighteen-inch pipe, I would say at one point or another it has to be mine, because I understand that the trees that are on my north side are my trees, they're on my property. And so, the eighteen-inch pipe is on this side of the trees, is on the south side of the trees.
So it could be on your property?
The drainage pipe is partially on my property.
Well, unless you grant it an easement, they have no legal right to put it there, I don't believe.
The eighteen-inch pipe, or what they're running off the roof?
What they're running off the roof. But again, I'm not an attorney, and certainly not a land use attorney, but that would be my first, my first thought. But if they have pipe on your property, they have no right to do that.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look closer. I can't say with a hundred percent for sure that, you know, all I can go off is, is I do have a marker in the southeast corner, or northeast corner, and going off that, the trees are on my property.
Have you had an experience, had an opportunity to experience like a four or five day period of slow rain instead of a, it's because...
Oh, a slow rain?
You have that rate of rain?
Yeah, a slow rain, no problem. As if it comes in a hurry.
You know, unfortunately, we had some people who were on Council Oakway and around in there that were, if we had a heavy rain, it would certainly back up and experience flooding. But on slow rain, there was no problem.
No, slow rain, and even this one, where it was backing up like this, I would say an hour to an hour and a half after it stopped raining, it pretty much all left my property.
Didn't see any backup at the pipe or anything, did you?
You know, a puddle.
Yeah.
But it wasn't like it was coming up my whole backyard, up near my deck.
I mean, the way I viewed it, everything was sloped gradually right into that pipe there, and I really didn't see any sign of any blockage anywhere, even on the other side where it sits.
No, I don't think there's any blockage. I think, as I said, I think the water gets to it too quickly, it rains hard, because you've got, a hundred percent of my property is going to that pipe.
You know, if it was the front yard up like that, that water would probably go towards 138, and then...
I just assumed that the engineer took all that into consideration when they did the plans, that they felt that it was...
They threw it, they probably should have.
It sits approximately three feet lower. What was the vegetation like during that time? There's farthest ground cover or grass? I don't see how an eighteen-inch pipe...
Well, the part where it backs up near, closest to my house, is sodded, so it's cut lawn. And then, just on the other side of the aluminum fence, it's, it's tall grass, it's a foot high. Probably not quite that high at that time in the spring, because it pats down quite a bit in the winter.
Question is, this was, I think, I think at this point you kind of nailed it, there was being a, I'm not sure it's a planning board matter either.
I was just trying to see if there was some solution either into the holding pond that's to the west.
You had a question, or?
I just said, I, you know, I don't know. I'm not an engineer. All I know is I've got water on my property. I just, I wondered if there was something that could be done into the holding pond, or, you know, what the next other choice is to get water off of that land faster when the water comes that fast.
So, we don't have anything, the question is fifty elevation?
Yeah, we don't know, so these are, these are actually still accurate, the contours.
This shows a six, five, eight, it's more than cresting.
What?
It's more than cresting, you know, this is forty-nine, basically it's forty-nine. So it's a crosshairs all over.
So it's actually lower than...
Yeah, what? It should have, these corridors are right.
If they're...
Yeah, I don't know. The board wishes we could take a look at this, see if there is just any other possibility.
Okay, yeah, so, Peter, who is an engineer, will look at it and make some suggestions, if there are any to be had, other than, as I said, legal remedies, which...
And what type of lawyer did you say?
A land use attorney?
Land use.
Yeah, I don't, I would, if you think that that, that pipe, the neighbor's pipe is on your property, making sure that it is or isn't, is it something that you should do, whether it be by survey, or just walking the lines, or coming up with a rough estimation, and then, I don't know what their response would be, but they have to get it off your property. And if, in getting it off, then they may be able to make the problem less, or they may be upset with you making them move it and make it worse.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know how much better it would make it, because all of this was before that house was even started.
And, so the land behind their house is a wetland, you're saying?
To the west of their house is wetland.
It's wetland.
Is what it says, they won't build on it.
And, yeah, 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 and you believe that the water from the wetland is also coming to your property?
I can't say. I do know that...
So most likely, the water sheeded towards the wetland from your property before the subdivision went that way, and that way.
All I know is that, you know, before the house went up, there was always a natural incline to the west, but they used to get one heck of a pond in that one corner, which is now their backyard.
You can see, this is, this is where his house is.
Yeah.
This is where the new house is here.
Yeah.
And you can see that there is a wetland that surrounds us, and actually, when you start about a ridge, there is kind of a ridge right here.
Yeah.
So this, and this is always, this is always graded this way.
Yeah.
And this is kind of graded this way to this low spot in here, and that was the idea of this culvert to pick up the water in this area.
So this, this house here is the subdivision?
Yes.
And then his house is not this one, it's...
And I don't know where the property line, I think the property is in this area. It's different stairs, so you have...
Yeah, but you can at least see the...
And there's a minor change to that property line between my house and theirs, because they had actually gotten the house too close to my property and didn't realize it. I agreed to have them go ahead and have the line more in a diagonal, or, I mean, horizontal than a diagonal, so we're in the process of...
But ship them out of, out of setbacks?
Yeah, it's about thirty-seven feet on one side and thirty-seven feet on the other.
Did you get any kind of agreement that they would fix the water for that consideration?
No.
I'm using hindsight to say, I mean...
I, although I will say, he did come out and grade my property some more, and he's been really good about that. Tried to get as much grade to it. The problem is, like I told him, I said, "I don't know that getting the water there even faster than it's getting there now is a cure for them."
I honestly believe that the amount of water that was coming in from 138 will impact that quite a bit, the way it was, because there was a substantial amount of water going in from 138.
And as I said, the curve is, all three places in the curve is fixed now.
Exactly, so, and we haven't had any rain since then. I think, I think the problem is solved, but, I mean, if we have a downpour, you know, for three hours or four hours or whatever, maybe you will get some. But that eighteen-inch pipe is, should be able to handle all of that.
Well, is it still something you'd be willing to look to see if there is a solution?
Just, you know, just to see.
And then, you know, I can keep an eye on it, and...
And when you do get, when, when there is a good rain, take a look at the road, not just how the water on your property is going into the culvert, look along the road, see the water that isn't coming onto your property. I mean, the more you can observe, the better it is to come up with a solution if it even is needed.
It, I mean, it should drain pretty well, because I have a drain right by, right by my mailbox. So I have a grate right there. It was a matter of it wasn't quite making it to the grate.
Do you know how far down in the road below grade that drain is, the storm drain? The only reason I ask is my neighbor had a similar problem, and the highway department, this was the town highway department, not the DOT, they allowed him to put in a drainage pipe that connected to the underground on the road pipe, and it took away all of this problem. That would take engineering and permission, and that might be some type of solution, I don't know, where if you could carry some of the water off your property into the road drainage system. But that's not, it's not a simple solution. It's complicated engineering and easements and permission and all sorts of things. A little different if the highway department in the town says, "Sure, go ahead," but this is the state highway, so it's a little different scenario.
Yeah, and I, I mean, to be honest with you, I have a couple places that I can see in the front yard that pools when it rains really hard, but for the most part, it's running to the west and then running to the north. And I finally got it to where it doesn't impact my house at all on the south or the west side as the water comes around.
So we're making progress, somewhat.
Somewhat. But I'd be willing to keep an eye on it and email.
Yep, and when Peter, Peter gets back to us with the report, I'll email it to you and you can decide for me.
Appreciate your patience. We're gonna try to help as much as we can, for sure.
And if there's anything you need, like if you need me there when you come out, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me, or the developer of the subdivision? I came tonight, so...
Do you have any comments or suggestions?
Well, I thought it was resolved, quite frankly. My engineer tells the eighteen-inch pipe is more than adequate. You know, hindsight is always easier, obviously. So I don't want to blame AJ or his engineer, because they may not have seen that condition in advance. I highly doubt that AJ said he didn't know the water was going in or that it wasn't going to be elevated, so, you know, I don't think that that statement came out of Patrick Suze.
So he thought that the AP usage was adequate?
Well, I'm saying, he made reference that Mr. Suze, who built his house, would have built the house higher, had he known the road was going to be elevated. He was well aware of that road going in. He, in fact, wanted to face the house down my road. I told him, "If I could have done that, I wouldn't have sold the lot."
Yeah, it would have been part of the subdivision.
Would have been part of the subdivision. So, again, I don't want to throw AJ under the bus, or say Monday morning quarterback or hindsight, but top of foundation, the top of foundation on the front of that house is adequate, it's high enough. It was designed to go into elevation a hundred, it went in at a hundred and two. Unfortunately, they didn't take advantage of that high elevation on that foundation and pitched the front yard to Somerset Ave. You know, so that, all that grading comes to the back now. And not all of it came to the back on the previous house. Most of it did, but that house did pitch to the, to the street a little bit before it was torn down. The real problem with the backyard is they dropped the foundation, top of foundation in the back to a four-foot knee wall. So that, what that means is, oh, even though, so it's a little deceiving, even though top of foundation is elevation one oh two, the rear foundation is now at elevation probably ninety-eight.
And that explains why the bulkhead is only six inches from the grate.
That's right.
I didn't quite get that.
So they would have been better off leaving top of foundation at a hundred all the way around, and then he would have plenty of pitch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they were up two feet, but unfortunately, they didn't use that to their advantage to pitch the front yard to Somerset Avenue. And then they dropped the back. So I just wanted to make that a little bit clearer, because I thought that was a little misleading. And then the last point is that the subdivision was approved, I own the land after it was approved. Mr. Boyce had been on the land, he had no objections to that subdivision going in. I obviously didn't, I owned it, so I had to chain the title. I sold it to AJ, he was well aware of what I was doing. And I think that the inspections will, reports will back me up on this. The road was in. The gentleman bought the house in October, the pipe was already in, the drainage systems were in, and landscaped, and we paved the road November fifteenth, and he bought the house a month earlier than that.
Twenty-fourteen?
Was that? Yeah, twenty-fourteen. Yeah. We were in, so to say we did that road elevation after he purchased his house is just, that's not true. So as the water comes down, what was happening, and we saw this, even though that land, you know, flowed towards the pipe, towards the rear, that was the general slope of the land before, and it continues to be that way. Not all the water was making it there, so even though the general slope was going in that direction, when you walked in that backyard, and I owned it, I know, you stepped in puddles, some of them six, eight, eight inches deep. So all that, all that puddling took place, and there was a significant puddling from that eighteen-inch pipe that just couldn't get to it. Even though, even though the water was falling in that direction, it got hung up on kind of a high spot. That's all been cleared out now. So when you look at his backyard, it's smoother, and it gets to the eighteen-inch pipe. He didn't do that, AJ didn't do that, Nelson Pacheco did all that, and I assisted, but Nelson did the work.
That's the guy with the house.
That's the guy who built the house. So that was all fixed.
And this was after the rain that he was talking about?
That's right.
Okay, so...
So he hasn't seen that yet.
Okay, so between that...
But everybody's putting their water over there, which is fine with me, but it all comes onto my property, and I think if tables were turned, you know, there might be something said. I mean, the sump pump is directed in that eighteen-inch pipe. All the water goes to that. The driveway was built downhill, that all goes over there. Nelson put all his water over there, which is fine with me, I don't care, I'm not going to live there, so I'm not going to, you know, get that excited about that, but when I have to get dragged in and say, "Hey, you did things wrong," you know, you have to kind of look at all the additional water that is over there now. How much of an impact, I really don't know, what a sump pump will impact that whole area, but that's where it goes. No permission was asked, it was just done, which, which I'm okay with. And, believe me, if there's something I can do reasonably over there, I'd be more than happy to do it, because I really don't like the fact that a neighbor comes in and has a problem with my subdivision and burdens the planning board with it. So if there's something that I can do that is reasonable, I'd be more than happy to do it.
I think we all appreciate that, and after Peter makes some recommendations, if you can, if there's recommendations that you can help us out, we'll be getting to them.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda is continuing the public hearing special permit and site plan review of the solar array at Zero Elm Street.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'll be stuffing it down for a little bit.
Oh, right.
My name is Jeff Asit, I'm a civil engineer with Morse Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, Southern Sky Renewable Energy. With me is Frank McMahon, he's with Southern Sky. As you know, we've filed a site plan review and special permit application for a ground mounted photovoltaic project, and it's been a while since we've been in front of you, so I'll run through the existing conditions and the proposed conditions. In the existing conditions, the property is about twenty-five acres in size, it's made up of two parcels, it has frontage on Elm Street, there's an access point off of Elm Street, and the front portion of the property is currently a capped landfill in this vicinity. That area is totally enclosed with an fence, and the rear portion of the property is currently wooded from this point back. The proposed project involves installing solar panels. The first, first location where the panels are being installed is on top of the capped landfill. landfill in this vicinity. And that will be done under the supervision of the DEP. Anytime you put in a project on top of a landfill, especially like this, you need a DEP post-closure permit. And they look at how this will impact the landfill. So they are looking at that very closely.
How many acres are on that particular parcel there?
Right here?
Yes.
That's two acres.
Two acres.
I mean, the, the area of the panels themselves are about two acres. The entire area is six acres.
Is that about the size of the so-called landfill?
Yeah.
Two acres?
Uh, no, I would say the landfill, this whole area is more like six acres.
It's more like three then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So have you got confirmation from DEP for your post-closure?
Um, no, no, we haven't applied for it yet. I'm sorry. We made application. We postponed it until such time as we get some direction from the town. We put it on hold. So the, the rear portion of the property, backyard is the area that's currently wooded and we're proposing to install a solar panel in that location as well. The method of construction is that they'll lay down filter fabric and then three inches of crushed stone and their racking supports and the panels will sit, sit right on top of that. It's more money upfront to install it, but there's less, less maintenance down the road. You're not weed whacking in between all the panels. Instead, you're just pulling weeds periodically. As far as setbacks for zoning, we're required to provide a seventy-five foot setback to the street, which we're well more than, we're at two seventy-five. And to the side and the rear lot lines, we have to provide thirty feet or fifty feet if it's a budding or residentially developed property. So on the original filing, we provided the fifty feet all around. And at the original hearing, as you know, we had some, some objection from the abutters on Hart Street. So at that time, we, we continued the hearing. We had a site walk. And then we submitted the plans that I'm presenting to you now. And the main change that we made was that we increased that buffer to seventy-five feet to their properties at, at a minimum. And in doing so, it does make a drastic reduction on the, on the output of the project. We're reducing the project by about ten point eight percent. But the positive to that is that we're providing the additional woods in between the panels and their properties. And it actually results in an additional one point one acres of, of additional woods beyond what we provided originally. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that the total area of the woods, all the green space that will remain, is thirteen acres. So it's a twenty-five acre property. We're certainly not asking to clearcut the whole thing. We have setbacks to meet to the property lines, leaving buffer zones to the abutters, wetland setbacks, and there's steep slopes. And so, so that's about fifty-two percent of the site will remain as woods. And also, I think a lot of people that can compare to the town are aware of the project on the other side of the Tongue River, the solar project, that the abutters can, from, on Hart Street can see very clearly. And I want to point out that the difference between these two projects is, projects is that that project is constructed on the face of a hill. So anyone with a view from the other side of the river of that hill can see, see that project. This project's being constructed on a property that's generally far more level and it's at the top of the hill instead of on the slope. And we're leaving trees all the way around the property that are mature trees, good thirty feet tall.
Won't that shadow your panels?
Yeah, it will, unfortunately, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a negative. But we know that we're not gonna, we're, we're trying to leave as many buffers as we can. So, thank you very much. Frankie, you wanna leave it out or?
Heidi, the, the issue relative to shading is measured in our analysis that we do from an electrical engineering perspective in terms of output. So on the south side of the site where the trees, that's where the trees impact. The trees don't impact on the east, the west, or the north. So it's on the south side. So we'll take into consideration, and our bank takes into consideration, and our total output is impacted by shading. And it's only impacted by a certain time of year. Obviously, this time of year, in wintertime and going further, the sun's lower in the sky, you don't have the same arc. Sometimes this, this, the sun is higher in the sky, so you have less shading. So we take shading into consideration in all our financial, in all our output models, which then in turn get included in our financial models.
Red, ask a question. You, you're indicating that you're, you're about a ten percent loss in output. But as I was looking at the plan, I see changes in the layout in other areas, not along this side, along Hart Street. You've pulled back. You've lost some of the output due to changes. Was it providing the buffer to the vernal pool? Is that correct?
That was on the first plan, though.
No, I think it was, in, in this iteration that we're submitting now, we, we had to slide these panels back. And in doing so, we couldn't just shift the whole, the whole array. So we, we did reconfigure some of the, some of the panels to kind of make a best fit for the area we work with. The ten point eight percent number I'm getting is a comparison of the number of panels proposed in the last iteration compared to the number of panels shown on this plan.
Last iteration mean what? Last April?
Yes.
I was looking at the plan, it seems that you, you reduced the length of the rows back in the northwest corner. So.
Northwest.
Yeah, those rows aren't as long.
Um, we, we were only providing fifty-foot buffer to that lot line, and we've increased it to seven five.
So that buffer there has been increased and that's been part of the effect, huh?
Yeah.
Have you met with conservation commission?
We met with them. We originally filed for a request for determination of applicability. They would like to see a notice of intent filing. So we wanted to get some feedback from you. And we'll be filing with them, refiling with them shortly. The wetlands were all delineated by a wetland scientist and are all shown on the plan.
Can we get a copy of your, your lease agreement?
At this point in time, all we have is, we don't have a lease agreement that we've entered into. It's a, it's a land control agreement, but I could provide a copy of it.
So you used to have an option to, option to lease? I don't know what the legal.
Right. I have an option to lease based on approvals. So if I, the planning board, CONCOM, and interconnection agreement, which we've obtained, post closure use permit, which is in process. And so, yeah, we've got a land control agreement with this.
So is that sufficient site control?
It, it is, but the board is certainly within its rights to request a copy of that to evidence that the site control exists. And typically, that's provided by an applicant upon request. If there's proprietary information that's a part of it, they can redact that information, but typically they've not.
We don't have the objection to providing a, a copy of the, the form of lease either. We'd be happy to provide that to you.
That'd be good. Now, other, other solar farms that we've had before the board have had a decommissioning plan and, and they've provided us with a bond. I don't remember seeing that in your.
Right. So, so our understanding of the process in Commonwealth Massachusetts is that DEP controls decommissioning. So every project that we've built, we have entered into a financial assurance mechanism with DEP. The only, particularly in the case of privately owned landfills such as this one. So as part of our post closure use permit, we have to submit a decommissioning estimate and then a plan and then a financial assurance, either a surety bond or a cash deposit that will have to be made into DEP. And the DEP essentially preempts local law on.
But is that for the entire site or just the?
It's required by every other.
I understand it, but it's still preempted by state law. So.
Well, that, I think the town and this board would also like for us to have a plan and a bond in place as well.
I'd refer to your legal counsel, but I'm pretty sure that you, we can't do both. We've got to pick one or the other. And it's state law will preempt the local law. And I can give you the statute if you're interested.
Yeah, I, I'm certainly willing to review whatever the applicant submits. I'm, I'm not so sure that state law governing environmental controls preempts local zoning law. Certainly, DEP governs development of these sorts of facilities on landfills. Nevertheless, under chapter forty-eight of the zoning act, you've adopted a bylaw that provides for a decommissioning process. If the applicant wants to seek a waiver from that process, the applicant can do so. If the applicant wants to submit something from DEP, from its legal counsel indicating that the DEP process somehow supersedes the local zoning process, I'm happy to review that as well. That's not been my experience, that the DEP process is all-consuming such that it would eliminate any local process or local protections that would exist.
And at the same time, would the DEP surety, whatever it's called, be covering all of it or just that which is over, the landfill?
Amount. So the land is technically, the land is all a landfill in the eyes of the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. So.
Both parcels?
Both parcels are determined to be under their jurisdiction. So we, we don't have an objection. We don't want to do both. We, you know, we'll file a financial assurance mechanism with the town. If DEP says it's okay, if DEP says it's not okay, then we'll have to figure out some sort of a waiver or something along those lines. We just went through this in Carver. That's the only reason why I'm, I'm mentioning it because they have a, a provision in their bylaw and DEP southeastern region stepped in and said, no, we'll take it from here. And the town said, fine. So I don't know if that was by agreement or what the case was. But nonetheless, we would be happy to post a financial assurance mechanism that meets the town's bylaw, meets the state law, whatever the issue is, we're happy to do it. We've done it on six different occasions in the past.
Now, is there a requirement for a layer analysis?
There isn't a requirement, but I think, I think that the position that this particular solar farm is at and being at such a high point, and some of those homes that have do a butt it, there is, the lead floors, street floors, I think maybe that if the board is in agreement, maybe we should have a layer analysis done.
Now, that might come right, go right in hand in hand with a development impact statement, section fifty-three, forty of our bylaw, which in your, uh, April fourth letter of the impact statement, it addresses some of what's in here. But considering the amount of interest that the neighbors have, I believe it would be a, a good thing to have covered in more detail, section fifty-three, forty-one, which is a, and.
And forty-two also.
And forty-two of the physical environment, which it's a narrative, which I assume would include some plans that describe the general physical, physical conditions of the site, including amounts and varieties of vegetation, general topography, unusual geologic, archaeological, scenic and historical features of structures, location of significant viewpoints, which is very, a big part of it considering it's on a hill, stone walls, trees over sixteen inches in diameter, trails, open spaces, indigenous wildlife, and how the project will affect these conditions in, in, in section B. And then as well, fifty-three, forty-two, the surface water and subsurface conditions. Some of that may be part of your notice of intent filing with the conservation commission. I would imagine that there's some overlap considering we're talking about water and subsurface conditions. But it's, I think if, if you would cover that, you would be in a much better position when we come to our decision-making.
We'll certainly elaborate on that, on that narrative.
And now, what did the conservation commission say about the vernal pool? Did they have any, anything other than that, that they need a notice of intent filing? Are there any DEP things that?
I don't recall getting into real specific issues they had with the project. It was more that project, being the size of the project and how many wetlands are, are on the property and the amount of disturbance. They just weren't comfortable doing it under an RBA. They wanted to see a full, full notice of intent filing. The vernal pools under, have very specific regulations under your local conservation regulations. The vernal pool, the actual vernal pool is shown in the agenda line. And then there's an isolated wetland around it, shown in below. Typically, you would just have the, the hundred-foot buffer zone to the isolated wetland. But in this case, your bylaws define the vernal pool includes the area within a hundred feet of the actual vernal pool. So that's the second line. And then to that, you have a twenty-five foot no disturb buffer and then a fifty-foot no structure. We, we are complying with those requirements. Obviously, conservation will take another look at it.
Did, speaking of conservation, we're gonna, we overlap as chairperson said. I don't know whether they're gonna be asking for something from the National Heritage Foundation, but we would like to see something that the process has been done up there, make sure there's no extinct critters living up there.
Okay.
No, they would have it for the conservation also if they.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have no off the top of my head whether it's a priority or an estimated habitat.
Well, I don't know either, but we'd like to see it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's probably the easiest thing you've got to do is have somebody go out there and investigate that, so.
Well, it would be, it would be in the conservation commission filing the helping statement whether they're endangered species or, you know, priority habitats. And if so, then they're, when they filed the notice of intent, they have to send a copy of that to the national heritage program and then they get input.
So it's part of their process.
It's part of the.
I'm sure that's in my NOI.
Any other comments from the board? Questions? So if no.
I, I don't know if you know this answer, but I'm sure it would be in the DEP reports. Do you know exactly what was dumped there years ago?
I don't.
DEP would have that information, correct?
They've got boxes and files on.
Okay. So when they give their report, we'll, we'll.
You know, I don't think so because I don't think they, I don't know if they do a, a full record review. DEP, I'm not sure they do a full record review. As long as the, the landfill is closed, capped properly, and the certificate of, I'm not sure what the right word.
An idea when it was capped?
I want to say in the early eighties.
Yeah, because things have changed over the years as far as capping requirements.
So.
Not much. You know, some of the, some of those things need to be looked at and.
Yeah, so as part of our process, if there are, if there are depressions in the cap or there, we have, we use a company called GZA, Geo-Techical Engineering. They come out, they do a full assessment of the site. If there are any obvious problems that they see from a visual point of view, they also do some hand digging to get a sense of what the, the integrity of the cap is. What's the cap made of? So then they go report all that back to DEP. And if there are issues with the cap, then it becomes incumbent upon us to repair those or not. And then it become what's really the owner of the landfill in that case, in this case, Zeneca. It's their job to command and fix it. If there are any depressions and water is ponding, for example, but there's no, you know, integrity to the cap, they allow for, you know, minor, you know, regrading and adding of soil and things of that sort. So it's a process that's pretty, pretty detailed and it's, it's done by geotechnical engineers who have expertise in landfill.
Having that seventy-five foot buffer zone there, if, at this time of the year the leaves fall out and stuff, would you be willing to do any additional planting of evergreens to block that if needed?
Sure. We have, we have historically, wherever our projects have been located, so Carver, Berkeley, you name it, we have done additional plantings to assist in, in, in site issues, things of that sort. So, you know, so yes, the answer to your question is yes. You know, from what I heard during our site walk, you know, there are different, there are different folks have different views and different things. I'm not sure we're going to be able to accommodate all of them. We thought by adding the additional twenty-five feet of trees and such, it, it would take up some of that. The other point that I want to mention, and then we mentioned it on the site walk, but some of you were there and some weren't there. But, you know, our, the way our construction works is, you know, you probably have seen landfills, or you've probably seen solar facilities and the modules are at a thirty-degree, you know, a thirty-degree incline. Sorry? You know, and they're, and they're high up, you know, the, the leading edge of the module is, is kind of up to my, you know, it's up to my chest here. We use a lower profile design. On the landfill itself, the, the module will be at five degrees. It won't be, it'll be, it'll, it'll appear flat to you if you look at it. It's a very small incline. And then the property, as we move up here, again, the determination hasn't been made, but we'll probably, because of, we're, we're getting, you know, squeezed in closer and closer and closer here, we'll probably have to have a five-degree angle as well for those modules up there. So the rela, the leading edge of the module is, is only a few feet off the ground and the back end of the modules may be five feet. So they're, they're pretty low profile. They're not going to be, oops, sorry. They're not going to be modules that you'd see in different places that are well off. So if you come out of, I don't know, up to forty-four, there's that solar near Manheim. That's, those things are pretty high off the ground. It's not going to look like that. It's going to be much different. If you go through, to see what a lar, what office looks like, if you go to Carver, there's a landfill in Carver. there's a landfill in Carver that, off of Plymouth Street, you can see it.
Right on fifty.
Yeah, yeah. And that's one of our facilities, and you can see it's a lower profile. And we'd be happy to take you there if you're that interested, but it's a lower profile. So, it also adds to, you know, helps outing some of the visual impacts that you would typically see in some other, other types of projects.
Do you have other similar facilities closer to Boston?
We have a, we have a facility in Canton, which is a six-megawatt facility on Canton. The town of Canton's closed landfill. We have, um, a project that's being constructed right now in Hudson. We have a project that's being constructed right now in Chickopee. We have a project, and the Chickopee project is roughly the same size as this one. We have a six-megawatt project in Carver, around the Ravenbrook landfill. We are putting a two-megawatt project on the town of Carver's landfill on Main Street, or North Main Street, I think it is. And I know I'm forgetting something else. Oh, Berkeley, in County Street landfill, another waste management landfill. We're building a four mega, three-point-six-megawatt facility there at the current time. Those are all, those four are under construction now. The other three are, have been built and are up and running and operating.
So, no more comments from the board? We'd like to open up to the public.
We haven't.
If you could state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Sue Cody. I'm a resident on Hart Street. We haven't been here for about six months. So, I, we, I did report last meeting that we were here, but I feel the need that I should re-review some of the things that we discussed as well, and along with some other information that we as a community have found and are major concerns for this project. And I did print up my report as well as all of the information that would go with it, all the citations. And I'm sorry, but I'm going to kind of read it. According to the two thousand, I'm sorry. So, all of this information, and I did put some of it in the handouts we gave you, but it's, I took most of my information from the master plan, the Town of Dayton of two thousand fourteen, the Town of Dayton Open Space and Recreation Plan, the Dayton Reconnaissance Report, the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and a biographical sketch on the history of Bristol County. According to the two thousand fourteen Town of Dayton Master Plan, the Town of Dayton boasts many natural resources which offer critical habitat to wildlife and important ecological functions. Open spaces, which define the rural character of the town, provide scenic attractions and contribute to the town's economic vibrancy. These natural, historic and cultural resources are valued very highly by Dayton residents as expressed in public outreach process. They have been consistently considered as an important attribute of living in Dayton. And the chapter of the two thousand fourteen Master Plan ends with a series of goals and recommendations to better preserve these valuable resources in Dayton. It's interesting to note that Richmond Hill is specifically discussed and noted under the Landscape Character Section. The goals outlined in order to preserve the natural resources are as follows. Goal one, to preserve, protect and enhance Dayton's natural, cultural and historic resources. Goal two, to preserve and celebrate the agricultural heritage and rural character of Dayton. And goal three, to establish a long-term, sustainable balance between development and open space resources. As cited in July two thousand three, the Town of Dayton Open Space and Recreational Plan draft, prepared by the Town Subcommittee, two of the four main goals from this open space survey were, one, to preserve the natural environment of Dayton, and two, to preserve the rural character of Dayton. The report states that, quote, "Today, the majority of our landscape is forested. Dayton has few remaining areas of large protective forests. Wildlife also suffers. Management of public woodland is essential to sustaining a healthy ecosystem and wildlife habitat. As the density of the population increases," which we all know that it is, particularly now in Dayton, "the need to secure wildlife habitat will increase," end quote. The Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program biomap, as outlined in the Open Space and Recreational Plan, shows high resource concentrations in Dayton are common because it is an excellent environment for biodiversity, and that these high resource concentrations in town exist at six locations. One of these is named as the southern portion of town near Hunter's Hill, which is three-quarters of a mile from Richmond Hill and is a same topographical environment. This report continues to state that, quote, "All necessary steps should be taken to protect these areas," end quote. Also, according to this report, when asked in a survey of Dayton residents how important it was to acquire and preserve land in the natural state, ninety-two percent of us rated it as either very important or important. An action plan in this Open Space and Recreation Plan elaborates the goals and objectives, listing specific action items. And I thought this was incredibly important. Goal three is to preserve the rural character of Dayton. Under this goal, action two D specifically states that the action should be to, quote, "Work to protect the areas known as Richmond Hill, Hunter's Hill and Beale's Ledge," end quote. A quote from the history of Bristol County from the Harvard College Library states that the most considerable eminence in this township, talking about Dayton, is Richmond Hill. It goes on to say that it is an interesting spot to visit to the student of physical science as well as to the lover of natural scenery. The view from its summit, rocky summit takes in the, quote, "Blue Hills of North, Mount Hope on the South and Cumberland Hills in Rhode Island on the West. Portions of the cities of Taunton, Fall River and Providence are visible, as well as the towns of Somerset, Freetown, Berkeley, Attleboro, Norton, Rainham and Rehoboth," end quote. It goes to describe the probable formation of Richmond Hill, citing that marks of glacial action are very distinct here. The late Professor B Rogers used to visit the hill to get specimens of bival, fossil shellfish and ancient representative of the modern clam. Also, the chapter discusses curious and rare plant specimens that were found growing on Richmond Hill. And it is interesting to note that there are only four specific areas in Dayton noted in the history of Bristol County. These are Dayton Rock, Cedar Hill, Hunter's Hill and Richmond Hill. There should be no question that Richmond Hill is of historical significance. In addition, a report that we just found from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, the reconnaissance survey that I'll talk about in a little bit, also states that native sites may have been established on Hunter's and Richmond Hills because of their excellent vantage point and the presence of water sources. Also, there have been stories from neighboring residents that they have found arrowheads and such items from Native Americans. Lastly, I would like to turn your attention to the Dayton Reconnaissance Report, which I was just talking about, prepared by the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation in two thousand one. This report reviews the list of potential heritage landscapes compiled by the town and a windshield survey. Members of the Open Space Committee had identified eight potential heritage landscapes in Dayton. One of these eight heritage landscapes was named specifically as Richmond Hill. In closing, Scott will be talking more about these, but this all goes towards the guidelines and the bylaws. I would like to request that the project be denied a special permit based on the fact that it does not require, does not meet the requirements specifically sections five-three-two-four and five-three-two-five, nor does it adequately address section five-three-four-one. It does not meet Dayton's Master Plan goals of preserving, protecting and enhancing Dayton's natural, cultural and historic resources, nor does it preserve the rural character of Dayton. Everything that I have presented tonight is either from historical documents, state report, town report, or from Dayton's own resident surveys. Much of my information has come from the Town of Dayton's two thousand fourteen Master Plan. And keeping this in mind, I would like to restate a comment that dictated in the Open Space and Recreation Plan. It said, quote, "Dayton's rural character is in clear and present danger of ruination. Rare is the sight of a green meadow or an untouched woodland today. Our wildlife is being crowded out. Acres and acres of wood have recently been sold. There are virtually no places where a person can walk for solitude or enjoy nature for its own sake. This is something that is essential to our well-being. We must have protection and intelligence when it comes to understanding that our open space is precious for so many reasons," end quote. The report continues to state that at the time, there was, quote, "No plan for the preservation of open space and recreational areas." A master plan written in nineteen seventy, this is quoted in the master plan, in this, in this town's master plan. A master plan written in nineteen seventy, quote, "Has been gathering dust for thirty years. As a budding bedroom community, this small town must set a controllable course of development rather than have its quiet rural character bulldozed into history," end quote. I leave you with the request to please not let the master plan of Dayton of two thousand fourteen be put on a shelf or to collect dust. Let us learn from our history, preserve our history and protect our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have, um, my name's Scott Gates. I'm in a butter, uh, you know, probably a closest person. I know there's been some changes to the plan. I don't know when the plans were delivered to the office. Do we have? I came in on, I came in on Monday.
They were here yesterday.
They were here yesterday. I came in on Monday to ask to see a copy, and as at that point, they weren't here. I did get a computer PDF, so I was able to view it that way, but I did come Monday. You know, going and listening to, you know, to the gentleman speak about this project, they speak about this project and that it's a landfill, that this is a landfill site. And I don't know if anyone that has walked that site would consider over half of that land a landfill. Yeah, there is a portion of it. It's, um, it's clearly not a landfill area. It is the highest point in Dayton. There's comments about that they're not on the side of the hill. Well, I, you know, personally, I graduated college, but I went for about three or four years, but I'm telling you, it's on the side of the hill. If you ask Walsh and Malo, when they clear cut eleven acres of trees, that they will see the side of the hill.
Who, who's Walsh and Malo?
Uh-huh. So, these guys right down here.
Oh, okay.
So, Malo's house is, I think, right here, and Walsh is right here. So, this property goes uphill this way. So, it's all on the side of the hill. When they stand in their house, and you can go out here, I know there were some comments about, um, the trees and the seventy-five-foot buffer. If you go out there and take a look, there are not many trees in that seventy-five feet. You know, in the, in the middle of the winter, I can stand at my house, which is, I'm right here. I can see all this ledge right here. So, when I stand on my first floor, I will be able to see, I don't know how many acres this would be, but I should be able to see this from my first floor. And my second floor, seven months out of the year, I should probably be able to see all the way down the side of the hill. From my second floor, I can see the Galleria Mall sign on twenty-four. I don't know how I'm not going to see about four acres of glass and metal in my backyard. They're asking for a special permit to put a commercial business in my backyard. I don't believe it's a farm, a solar farm. It's a commercial business. This project is far different from the other projects in town. Most of us can drive, drive around and never see those projects. And as Sue pointed out, you can see, if you can see to Providence and you can see north to the Blue Hills and you can see Fall River, Osona, Berkeley, Somerset, you go down on Broad Cove Road, Broad Cove, you could see the tree line up there. I estimate the tree line cut as about, I think it was eighteen hundred feet, which is about a quarter of a mile. Once that's cut, it's gone. It's gone forever. They talked about their, um, they talked about their construct, their method of construction was three inches of stone and filter fabric. So, they're just going to go in and wipe out every tree and put three inches of stone and filter fabric and generally pull the weed off of Richmond Hill. On the developmental impact statement, I was glad, Mr. Bemby, that you picked up on the fact that there's one word in that development impact statement, and it's, uh, that they can, that they may include some of the following on these, uh, the way it was written in fifty, in section fifty-three, forty, that they may include some, include all or some of the following information about the physical environment. The only word that they took out of this whole section was that they were not removing any stone walls, and that's because there are no stone walls on that project. They did not touch on vegetation, general topography, you know, scenic viewpoints. So, neighborhood character and social structures and impacts on the natural environment. If you read their impact statement, for neighborhood character and social structures, how does it impact the site? The project has been designed to provide a vegetated buffers to the abutters' properties. The solar array is located a distance of two hundred and seventy-five feet from Elm Street and a minimum distance of fifty feet from the side in real life. So, they've increased that to seventy-five. The visibility of the project will also be minimized by angling the solar panels as close to level as feasible and positioning the panels as close to the ground as feasible. I don't know what that has to do with neighborhood character. I would like clarification on that.
Sue.
Impacts on the natural environment. Solar photovoltaic systems are environmentally friendly. Now, this is impacts on the natural environment. The energy produced is emission-free and the system will produce no noise or air pollution during operation. A construction phase operation and maintenance plan is included in the stormwater reports and calculation. The plan details the responsible party, inspection schedule and maintenance items required to control construction-related impacts, including erosion, sedimentation and other pollution sources. Again, natural environment. I don't know what that has to do with the natural environment. You're cutting eleven acres of trees in woods. All of us live off the farmland there, you know, probably about sixty acres, about five homes. The deer come through there, the owls feed in the field. You know, my eight-year-old son watched a hawk take a rabbit in our driveway and he wasn't too happy about it, but, so they come and they feed in the fields where we live and their protection is the woods behind us. You know, this development impact statement, they were not asked, they were not asked to do, they did it on their own. I really think that more time and effort should be put into that. And those, those two lines right there really, you know, they both, that bothers me. You know, and as Sue said, she feels that the permit should not be granted based on the fact that it does not meet the criteria. I don't see how that benefits to the town and the neighborhood outweigh the adverse effects of this project. I, if someone could tell me how, I'd like to see it. I guess it would be.
It meets all those criteria.
Yeah. So, it has to meet this criteria. I guess some of my other, um, things here, they cut ten percent out of the project. So, I had calculated the solar array to be about two hundred and sixty thousand square That's five and a half football fields. It's not on a landfill site. Yes, a portion of it is a landfill. You're going to see this project from several towns. It's, it's so different from the projects that are in town right now. It's, it's so different from the projects that are in town right now. What else? Vernal pools. We talk about, they talk about the setbacks, and that's according to, I guess, the bylaws of conservation. I'm not a scientist, but I can't imagine with that slope all going to the vernal pool, cutting every tree underbrush, putting down filter fabric, and three inches of stone is good for that vernal pool. There's only ten vernal pools in town. In all, in all of that, and there's only ten. And if you read on, um, in the master plan and a few other sections, it really says that the town needs to think about preserving vernal pools because very specific for certain forms and certain species.
Can I just, for a second?
Yeah.
The Community Preservation Act was specifically adopted in 2010 by the town for the following reasons: to protect land containing potential vernal pools, support agriculture, hunting, and forestry, which there is back there, support the efforts of the Conservation Committee to, I'm sorry, Commission, to identify and protect open lands, to promote connectivity and prevent fragmentation of wildlife habitat. This is exactly what this is. It's fragmentation of it. Yes, you're only taking half of it away, but you are fragmenting the wildlife habitat. And also to protect water supplies, wildlife habitats, and biodiversity. That's a whole committee and a whole act that was developed by the town to protect these things, and we're, this is completely going against the town's recreation plan, the town's master plan.
Master plan.
The committees that have been established to protect the town.
I think Sue brought up a point in the last meeting, and I couldn't be here, that there's a, um, what was it, for the conservation, to, they take a portion of the tax basis to buy.
CPC, one percent.
Right, one percent.
Yeah, for all of the CPC.
Yeah, so the, the town understands that it needs to do that. In their master plan on different sections, so this was land use, the other section was...
Of agricultural protection.
When was land?
Natural resources.
Yeah, natural resources. So on, under land, land uses, again, the, um, it stated the goals of the town. And goal two was to preserve Dayton's rural character and agricultural heritage that makes the town special. And goal four is encourage the reuse and redevelopment of vacant or underutilized buildings and land in Dayton to increase the town's economic viability. I think there's a perfect site for this. It's Xanacup owned, I believe. That could use an eight-inch, I mean, an eight-foot-high chain-link fence with some landscaping around it to, you could put a solar array right there, and it would, you know, probably look a lot better than clearcutting Richmond Hill. There's a section in here on recommendations under the land use that says additionally, if zoning regulations are not updated to reflect desired land use policy, some land could be at risk to inappropriate development. I believe this is inappropriate development, and that's coming from the master plan. I think that's all I have for right now.
Thanks. Anyone else? Sir in the back?
Yes, hi, I'm Christopher Walsh. My wife Karen and I own the property on six oh eight Hart Street, which Scott mentioned earlier. I'll just point out to you guys, so you're not here, are you with me? I own this property right here. I'm gonna stand here, because I don't wanna talk to my feet. And I don't have anything prepared, and I'm not gonna quote laws and bylaws and all that stuff, so you guys can decide what you want. My wife and I moved into this town twenty years ago. We were starting our, our life together. We bought a house on Center Street, which I still own. Our family grew, we decided we needed more room, we needed something in the woods, not located fifty feet off of the busiest road in Dayton. We found the property on Hart Street, walked the property, fell in love. There was nothing up there, literally nothing up there. The only piece going in was the Maylowe's house, who happens to be some of our best friends. As we built that property, we realized that there was an impact on our house, on our neighbors. The Frenets had lived there for a hundred and seventy-five years, probably. Water ran down our driveway, unfortunately, and impacted their property. We did everything, we've done everything we can to mitigate that situation, including drains just in the middle of my yard. I still fight water to this day, okay? I have put in my own ditch, drainage, that runs from one side of the property to the other side, not off anyone's property, in my own yard to try to stop, I call it the glacial flow of Dayton, okay? There's been a drainage culvert, whatever, put on the side of my property, on the one side of Maylowe's property, to prevent migracy, you know, making his lawn look great. It is what it is. My fear is, as we start to cut this stuff...
Before you go on, which way is the water going? Towards the back of your house or towards the front of the house?
Oh, it goes everywhere. You gotta come up there. So some goes this way in the backyard, and whichever doesn't hit my house, goes the...
So in your backyard, you're looking uphill or downhill?
I am, the gates is maybe higher than me, but I'm one of virtually the highest houses in Dayton, with the exception of our neighbors that are right at the end, there's that big house up there. So the water goes everywhere off a ledge. My fear is, we start to clear cut this land, and whatever we're gonna do, we're gonna pretend we're gonna put in some junipers or some, some god-awful evergreens in there. We're gonna start disturbing everything, and more water's gonna run out, and more land is gonna be disturbed. We bought this property because it was our dream. I wanted to live here for the rest, in this town with my children for the rest of my life. It's a joy I have in the morning when I go outside with a cup of coffee and I look out at woods. Okay, when I lived in Center Street, I didn't necessarily have that. At that time, that's what I could afford. But we bought that because it's our dream. As I open my window in the morning to see, is it raining? Do I need a sweatshirt? And I pull up my shades, I'm gonna look at this beautiful solar panels. And I'll be honest, some of you don't wanna know what goes into those solar panels. They form a wave. We call this the Deer and Coyote Highway. They run right through our property. I have pictures, and if it wasn't on my phone, I could see of twenty and thirty deer in my backyard, and coyotes, ten of them, scaring the crap out of us, but guess what? That's nature. That's where they belong. Solar panels don't belong here. Nature belongs here. Dayton's fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-four acres, right? You've got one that already went belly up on Elm Street. Do we wanna put another one in, and really, the most historical part of Dayton? You can see my house from Main Street. I can see my house from Somerset. I'm sure if I went down the river, I can see my house from there. I know, because we've turned on certain lights, because we were giddy when we built it. So I'm gonna see my house, it's gonna be great, and I'm gonna have my goofy Christmas lights with the laser stuff up. Over here, I'm gonna have some solar panels. Is that what we want our town to be? We wanna be the solar town? Though we're the hot agricultural, that, the place I went there, you ate, I don't know what it was, back when Bill was a kid, some little rundown thing with all the chickens that run around. Said the hot of agriculturals, uh, the hot of agriculture, whatever in Dayton. DRs is, and, and I'll, yeah, I'll bring Rehoboth into it. It's agricultural, this is what we built our town on. We didn't build a town on a chemical plant or an automobile auction. Town was built on people farming the land. And then we're gonna go in here and, no offense, sir, I've been on the other side of the fence. This is what we want? I'm sorry, I think it's irresponsible as a town to approve it, I think irresponsible to put it in. And I'll be honest, that goes in, we might sell. I, I can't live next to that with my kids. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to revisit the drainage issue just for a second, too. I don't know how many houses have been affected by it, but I know the town has already been by our house, has come and has already checked out the area, because there are such drainage problems already, to clear out more of that vegetation, and it's all downhill from where this is going to be, it's just the drainage is just gonna be, it's already a nightmare, it's gonna be worse. And the town's already checking us out to figure out what we can do about it.
And it is because of the amount of light, that's all light, so.
More comments?
My name is Bill Vis, I live at five thirty-seven Hart Street. We installed a solar field within the past year, and in reflecting on our project and what it took to get it done, there were a couple of requirements that were required of us that aren't being required of these people. Number one, the town actually visited the site and made sure that the position that the solar field was in, none of the neighbors were able to see it. And number two, that none of the trees or vegetation was able to be removed. And also, there have been covenants added to the deed so that those, certain conditions still are maintained so that the neighbors cannot see it. And I ask that, that these people here be held to the same standards that I've been held to. The other thing that bothers me a little bit is the cost of my project. I just look at the permitting fees. The permitting fees exceeded ten percent of the cost of the total project. Just trying to put it in perspective and get a feel for it, that's all there is to it. Thank you very much.
More comments? Do you have anything else to add?
So, so just a couple things. First, you've heard lots of comments, and I'm, I'm not offended in any way by any of the comments. I respect your opinions, I expect your views. That's the reason why the town has a bylaw, the town has a process, and this is the process. As I said, and as I've said on at least two occasions, we're not interested in jamming something down people's throats. Things that we haven't spoke about yet are what the benefits to the town at large in addition to renewal. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax revenue over the course of the project. No impact on city, on town services. No traffic issues. It's development that is beneficial by virtue of policy of the state of Massachusetts. You quoted and commented on a bunch of different documents. There are just as many documents that talk about the benefits, the benefits of solar, the benefits of renewable power, ending our dependency on foreign oil, and I could go on and on and on and on, on a macro level. But you're right, I don't have to look out my bedroom window and see this. We've tried to make, and we've tried to accommodate the best that we can. And I guess that's the process that the planning, that's the decision now the planning board has to make. We've got drainage calculations, we've got studies, we can tell you what's inside a solar panel, we can tell you what's inside of an inverter, we can tell you what's inside of a transformer, we can tell you all those things, and I know exactly what the reaction is gonna be, similar to the reaction that you have on your face right now, Scott. It's one of disbelief. And I get it, I, I get it, I've done this before, and, and it doesn't matter what your educational level is, it doesn't matter anything, you folks have to live here day in and day out. I get it. I think we looked out of your bedroom window, in fact. So we will go through a process, we'll produce all the evidence that we can that makes the argument on our side, and then the planning board will have to make a decision. And, and, and we'll respect that decision. And if there is a give and take that can be had to help this process along, we're willing to participate in it. If the answer is no, we're not interested in negotiating, we just don't want it, and that's just the way we're gonna be, well, then that's fine, and then we'll just go through the process and we'll see where we end up. That's the beauty of our country. I just came back from Cuba, so I'm really feeling good about America right now and the processes that we have. So that's the beauty of America, that's, that's the process that we have, and that's what these people have to sit there and do. I know a couple of you already have your minds made up, and that's fine, but we, we need to go through a process and go forward. So I, I respect your opinions, I respect what you have to say, I'm certainly not offended in any manner whatsoever. I get it, I truly am, and I've said this on a couple of occasions, and Scott was kind enough to have us over on his property, and we accessed the site through his backyard as well, and I was admiring his little ice rink, and I see this little guy's a hockey player back here, I'm a hockey guy myself, so I appreciate that. So with that, Jeff, you make a couple of comments on more of the, you know, the technical aspects of these things, but again, we don't wanna drag this thing out, you know, another six or seven months. It's just not in our best interest, it's not in your best interest, it's time, it's effort, you folks probably have things, better things to do than hang around town hall for a planning board process. And, and I'm sure we all do. So, you know, if, if there's, if there can be no meeting of the middle ground, there's no middle ground to talk about, then I, I offer that, I throw that out there, and if there isn't, then just let's talk about that and let's see where we end up with this thing. I don't wanna waste your time, and I am wasting a lot of your time. This is now at least three meetings, a site visit, and people have lives to get on with. So we very much wanna build a project here, we very much wanna build a project here, we believe that we fit within the parameters of the special permit ordinance, we feel as though we are good neighbors, we are responsible neighbors, we take our reputation very seriously. And again, I, you can sit and question and snicker and everything else, 'cause I'm the big developer from out of town. I guess that comes with the territory. So, but we're, but we, and I don't know who the developer is on Elm Street, where someone referenced to a project that went belly up, I'm not familiar with who that was, I'm not sure what that project was about.
What was that company, Sun Edison, their backer?
Right, so Sun Edison went bankrupt, they did.
Yes.
Yeah, one of the big national companies, they went bankrupt.
So who, speaking of that, do you have a third party?
I do. Can I finish my point and I'll get back to it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, so, so I'm more than happy to have a conversation separate and apart from this formal process. If that conversation doesn't go anywhere, that's fine, we'll make a decision about whether or not we're gonna move forward with a, a formal process, but please don't, you know, I, I, I hear you, I'm listening, and I've listened to you on a couple of different occasions. We've come back with what we thought was a reasonable solution to try to preserve and protect your views, and that's what this is about, it's about your views. And let's, let's call it what it is, we, we respect that fact. I get it. So as far as our backers, as far as our company, Sun This Guy Renewable Energy is a three-person and three-member, there's three of us that own it, a gentleman by the name of Ralph Plumbow, me, Frank McMahon, and another guy by the name of Michael Harrington. We went to high school together, we're a lawyer, he, a construction guy, he's Mike, and then the accountant is Ralph Plumbow. That's, that's Sun This Guy Renewable Energy. Our financial resources come from a variety of different areas. We will do construction, I'll put our construction financing through a company called Seminole Financial, which is a specialty lender that does renewable energy projects all across America, they're based in Clearwater, Florida. We've already done a hundred million dollars of loans with those, with those folks, and we will participate with them as we move forward. We will use tax equity, and that tax equity comes from a variety of big investors, such as John Hancock and TIA-CREF, and a variety of other entities out there that purchase tax equity. So that's another part of it. The way we, the way we, and someone mentioned this is a for-profit business, it is in fact a for-profit business, there's no doubt about it. The way this thing works is, and the reason why we can pay six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes to the town over the course of the twenty-year of our, twenty-year of our lease, is because we will connect to the national grid infrastructure, of which we already have an interconnection agreement, they've already done a study, we meet their technical as well as load matching issues, so we're ready, we have it, we have an agreement, we just haven't executed it yet. We sell electrons, we sell electricity into the grid, and essentially what we do is we've got contract...